Hello everyone, a good evening and welcome to the Kalahi Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September ten, twenty twenty five, and it is now seven oh two P M. Rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and one recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. It says two to three minutes, but we can go up to five minutes at most, but we will have to cut you out for five minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking, please state your person last name for the record before moving into your comments or questions. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note, the board may take action on any agenda um on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law Hawaii Revised Statutes, Chapter eighty-two. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. You can find archive of handouts and reference materials concerning the Kalahi Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen at our Uno Drive, and meeting recordings can be found on YouTube. Um, we will move on to Suri Malye Reports Honolulu Fire Department.
For the Honolulu Fire Department Neighborhood Board, the statistics provided below represent current numbers of incidents in the neighborhood board's geographical area for the previous one. More details on incidents and related app information, please visit the fire response search tool on our H F T website at fire.honolulu.com under the news and info tab. Should you have any questions, please email hftnhb@honolulu.com. For incident statistics for August twenty twenty-five, under fires, we have zero structure fires, zero water line and brush fires, three nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and zero activated emergencies. For our emergencies, we have seventy-three medical emergencies, zero motor collision with pedestrians, five motor vehicle accidents or collision, zero mountain rescues, zero rescues in ocean, and zero hazardous material incidents. For our fire safety tips and announcements, fire safety tip, charge it to fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. This year in the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign, we're just educating everyone about using these batteries safely. Lithium ion batteries store a lot of energy in a small place. These batteries can overheat, start a fire, or explode if overcharged or damaged. By learning how to buy, charge, and recycle these batteries safely, you can help prevent a fire in your home. So tips we have are buy only listed products. Buy a product that uses a lithium ion battery. Look for a safety certification mark such as the U L, D C L, or C S A. This means it needs important safety standards. Charge devices safely. Always use the cords that come with the product to charge. Follow instructions from the manufacturer by new chargers from the manufacturer or one that the manufacturer has approved. Charge your device in a hard service. Don't overcharge your device. Unplug it or remove the battery when it's fully charged. Recycle batteries responsibly. Don't throw lithium ion batteries in the trash or regular suction bins because they can start a fire. Recycle your device or battery at a safe designated location. Visit call2recycle.org to find a recycling spot near you. The H F T is hosting a Fire Prevention Family Day event on October fourth, twenty twenty-five at Honolulu from ten A M to two P M. Bring the family to participate in activities and meet our fire and life safety partners. Any questions?
Any questions from the board online or in person? I see, seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Okay, seeing and hearing none. If you do have any questions later on, you can always email them to me or um to the board and we can go over them very quickly very much. Up next is the Honolulu Police Department. You guys can stay in there. Honolulu Police Department, next, uh, C H P D.
Hello, this is District Five. My name is Sergeant Kato. We've got August stats for aggravated assaults. We have three auto thefts. Uh, for the month of August is four burglaries. We've got four, zero robberies, zero sexual assaults. Simple assaults, we have five thefts, we have seven, and uh car break-ins, we have one. Total cars for service is six hundred thirty-eight. And uh the tips for this month is road rage, how to avoid that. So uh number one is don't tailgate. Uh, two is drive predictably. Three, if you encounter anything on the road, call nine-one-one immediately. Avoid any kind of engagement. Drive with grace and show appreciation and aloha. Slow down, plan ahead. Uh, if you do encounter any kind of negativity, leave the area immediately and uh stay calm and composed. Pending any questions?
Any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Sergeant, and have a good evening.
Okay, you too.
Thank you. Up next is the Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda, who's here in person.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So my general announcements, I might read it off of here. So it's Imagine a Day Without Water, we have an event. It's gonna be on September twentieth, uh, ten to two at Winward Mall Center Court. So you bring your entire opponent this year for this annual Imagine a Day Without Water. It's a free family-friendly event. And we consider it's on September twentieth, Saturday, from ten to two at the Winward Mall Center Court. So during the event, you will learn about One Water Concept and why water is essential to every part of life. And number two, you can explore interactive displays from over twenty city, state, and community organizations. And three, enjoy hands-on activities, prize giveaways, including a forty-five gallon marine barrel, and much more. So find out more at our borderwatersupply.com/onewaterhawaii. And um I did pass up flyers to most of you here and on the table. I'll give them to you. And if there's any questions?
Any questions from the board online or in person? Mister Son.
Follow up about the road in front of the elementary.
Okay. Oh, um, I haven't been given any updates. It was a pass up road that, well, we're supposed to be talking with the Kalahi school, so I haven't received any updates.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I hear something.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Um, any other questions from the board online or in person? Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much. Thank you. Come to you very soon. Okay, up next is uh finding a vacancy. There is one at-large vacancy. Uh, do we have any nominations?
I do. I would just nominate Ropati.
Ropati, okay. Ropati, who is online, um, Liu, okay. Okay, are there any more nominations at this? Oh, is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second for nomination for Ropati? Chris will land on the second. Okay, any discussion need?
Or Iris, you can maybe work with each other in one conversation.
Okay, are there any more nominations um at this time? Okay, um, looks like I'm seeing and hearing no nominations, so we can close and we can just dis-
Or discussion or vote, yeah.
Discussion, yeah, discussion or vote.
Can we hear a little bit from him?
Yeah, definitely. Um, is Ropati, are you available to unmute and talk to us? And then give us a little introduction, um.
Sure. Right, yes, so Ropati Liuwa, uh, lived in Kalahi Valley most of my life. Um, as I mentioned before, I'm with the Fairytale Alumni Foundation, as well as the pastoral council for early of the mount and youth and young adult ministry. Um, so representing um two groups, a lot of Kalahi Valley residents, uh, but um working with um working with Chris and as well as Officer Allen and Tilomet, and um as well as James and uh and some of the board of Rosa Ro- uh, Simion, uh, as far as alumni, uh, I'm excited to get on board and see how we can move our community forward and also put some light on our community up in Kalahi Valley. And so, yeah, I have to know what else to say. Well, I'm the youngest of five siblings, uh, but one of many, many uh family members here in Kalahi. We're all proud to be from Kalahi and represent our community.
Thank you. Um, did anyone wanna have any additional questions by any chance or other discussions or? Oh, seeing and hearing none, so we can then go on to the vote if there are no objections. Um, seeing and hearing no objections, so is who can go on to the vote?
Uh, do you wanna do a roll call or just?
Uh, I guess roll calls, but we.
Okay.
We're going to work.
Okay. Uh, I'll begin with the roll call vote. Uh, Board Member Franklin.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Board Member Dadi. Yes, okay. Uh, Board Member Kumalai.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Board Member Walimaga.
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Mabazinu absent. Uh, Board Member Simeon Rojas.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Board Member James Soon.
Yes.
Okay. And Board Member Leohatun Baga.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so that's uh seven, uh, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, congratulations. Oh, yeah, show your face.
Ken, Ken.
Oh, yes.
Um, I, I just, hello?
Yes, me neither.
I'm sorry. Um, I just wanna thank everyone um for your vote and giving me this opportunity to contribute back to our community. And um I will do all that I can and my best to contribute to this uh neighborhood board and um be the ears and the eyes of our, our board and um this is uh sorry, I'm having a hard time because I'm shocked at the moment um to, to receive this nomination and to receive the support from all the, the board members and I promise I will not let you down and I will do my best to represent our district and our neighborhood board.
Of course, thank you, Ropati. I think you've already been representing your community ever since you joined our meeting, so to me it was, you know, it was obvious that we have to get Ropati on our board, so thank you.
And I gave you plenty notice, though.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I don't think you need to see my face, right? Cause you've already seen my face. Someone's trying to get in show my face.
Yes, you know, you're getting enthusiasm in your voice, yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Up for, um, up next now is residents and community concerns, three minutes each. Are there any resident and community concerns at this time? Oh, Mister Kumalai.
I, I have one. Uh, this Saturday, uh, September thirteenth, from eight A M to nine A M, we'll be uh cleaning up some grass in the P D Y uh Nalani Eha sidewalk area. So uh just uh some friends get together to clean in front of another friend's uh place. So anybody interested, welcome to show up at eight o'clock at uh P D Y this Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more um residents and community concerns at this time?
I have one for the Climate Commission, if I can talk.
Um, Climate Commission, um, and this is not regarding the presentations at crack or?
Oh, yeah, it'd be about the presentation. Should I wait?
No, the presentation's coming up. Uh, I think you guys are, yeah, just waiting to see if there's any community concerns. I think Dana has.
Okay. Okay.
Do I do this now or no? Yeah.
Um, is this the events?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could announce it now, yeah, especially if you're not gonna do it today. You do it now.
Okay. My name is Dana, yeah. I'm uh actually a substitute teacher in charge. But the first one is Hawaii Walls and it's a drive day market. It's gonna be this, the twentieth of September from two to six at the Farrakhan High School. The walls are the things that are being painted on the school right now. Um, that's the whole group that's doing walls on the school, so that's like a fundraiser thing for them. The other thing that's coming up soon, and I left uh two flyers for the parade and I left a sign-up sheet for your group to sign up for the annual parade that's coming up, uh, that Friday from six, and then the paiana is after that too, so. That's probably the, one of the community events that we pushing for, trying to keep a tradition going. It's been seventy-six years. And the last one is this one is for Farrakhan, the Ahmari Community Foundation, celebrating its fiftieth anniversary on February twenty-second. It will be a two-part um event. The first part would be for the older generation, our, our seniors, uh, is at um Honolulu Country Club, which is a breakfast brunch type thing. And then in the evening, from five to nine, is a celebration reunion at Bishop Museum at the park. So details are still in the works as far as price and all that stuff, but uh it's gonna be all the event for both, we doing two events for the school, and it's our celebration as well. The other thing that's uh happening next week as well is that uh in Las Vegas, uh, Farrakhan Football Team is playing Liberty. That's in Las Vegas. It's on a Friday night, so that's the other thing that's going on, but.
Is it gonna be televised?
I'm not sure if it's gonna be here, but that's kinda what's happening in the next couple of months and what we try to plan for and stuff like that, so if you need, I, I know I gave you guys applications for a parade, you can turn that in or stuff like that, so your, your group would be represented in the parade. That's basically if you have any questions or.
Um, we'll work on working with Kalahi爸妈. Are we going together or as a neighborhood?
Yeah, probably would be, that's, that would be united, pretty cool.
More than married, so how many people's?
No, no, Kalahi爸妈 said they're gonna attend too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We're still working on the grand marshal. Uh, so far, um, I'll keep it as. We're still trying to get people, that's why, so with the articles. Okay, thank you.
What, do you have a community concern?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, sure, I was going, um, uh, October eleventh, uh, we're um doing a project at the Kalahi Valley Gym. We're gonna be cleaning their, uh, the gym walks, scrubbing the gym walks. I work with Danny, who's the coordinator for the parks and the uh, the park recreational people that were here from meetings ago. Um, and uh, I know it was set for October fourth, but they came back and said they have an event, so we moved it to October eleventh from eight to eleven, so it's just three hours. Um, they're at the Kalahi Valley Gym. We're, we're basically gonna be like, kinda clean the walls of the gym and even like the windows if can, and then some of the, the glass, um, uh, windows and, and doors and stuff like that. Just to kinda beautify it for the kids using the park there. Uh, so it's October eleventh from eight, eight o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock. Um, and uh, so I, I try to get supplies, but they said if we can encourage community members to bring like buckets and old rags. Um, they have very limited supplies there. Um, so if you have like buckets and rags, who's somebody'll uh, clean. Uh, but I will get a flyer and all that stuff, um, forward out to the newsletter and so, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. Oh, it's just Dana.
So the stuff I gave you, can that be on the newsletter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, can I get?
We can work on the newsletter. I'm off tomorrow, so we can like put it all together.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, yeah. Can you, can you email this to us? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I also have like, um, Brandon also photo copy. He was given copies.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Just in case if we can.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. And if there are no more residents and community concerns, oh, Mister Franklin. Oh, Ropati.
I had a question for Chris really quickly because uh I'm confused. It, it is their responsibility to clean up that district park, and yet they're telling us that they cannot clean the park and they don't have any rags, they don't have any people, uh, and it's nasty and filthy. It's their responsibility. The community's coming in to assist them, yet they're offering not even cleaning supplies? I mean, this is ridiculous. If, it, they're the ones that let it get filthy. So the question is, what were they doing every month? We pay these people, they go to work, and that place is filthy. It's not dirty, it's filthy. And, and I'm ashamed at them for saying that we don't even have cleaning supply. You want the labor, you want us to bring the buckets, the rags, the stuff to clean it, and it's their responsibility. We're assisting them. We're saying we will provide you help, and they're saying, well, come clean our park because we're just not gonna do it. I, I just don't understand that. May, maybe they can talk to Chris about why they can't provide people or material or anything for this filthy place that they make our kids play in. I, I yield back.
Mister Lilimama.
Yeah, Randy, so I, I had that long conversation with Randy, uh, we're sorry, with um Danny about it, and I said that the community can provide the manpower to clean, but what do you guys have? Like, what's the plan? He said, well, we, we really don't have a plan. Uh, we just setting up the date and then you guys just kinda come in. So I said, okay, you guys have the supplies. He said the beginning of the year, they had all these rags and all these stuff, but because it's shared amongst the other district parks, they don't know where rags are, they don't know where buckets are, like, no one's being held accountable. And so I, I, I said, well, is there any way that we, we could get supplies for our project? And he said, our, our best bet is, he said, he could put in, he could try to put in a order, but our best bet is that we just bring our own buckets and our own dirty rags. That's, that, that's what he told me. Yep, yep, that's his word for it, exactly what he told me. So, yeah.
Oh, Mister.
We're supposed to be keeping it clean to begin with.
To my understanding, it's the rec park or the park and recreational people, like, that's kinda their job.
So there are people employed.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, I don't know what, what, where the disconnect is between eating the gym and getting it ready for our kids, so.
And I do see Mister Ropati has, has not really unmuted.
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, oh, I just wanna add on to uh what Dana reported in the announcement. Kinda uh took my announcement out of my mouth. Uh, so the football boys are flying out on Wednesday, and they'll be heading out to Las Vegas, and they'll return on the Saturday. So they will be, like Dana mentioned, will be having, but they will uh visit UNLV on the Thursday, and the Fairytale Alumni Community Foundation will be serving dinner to the football players, the boys of Kalahi, uh, while they're up there. And then also I wanna make a, a correction of, I, I also wanna thank Mister Franklin. Uh, he was the one that kinda uh persuaded me at the beginning uh to join, and then so I wanna thank him as well for his advice and everyone else, but again, thank you for the nomination.
Thank you, Ropati. Yeah, and if there are, if there are no more resident and community concerns at this time, then we can move on to our presentations of the night, so ten minute each. We do have the Climate Future Forum on harmful effects of pesticides using help by E. Um, they, oh, yes. Oh, sorry, it's. Olivia Eagle, okay.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Um, yes, so my name is Olivia Eagle, and I'm here to present about pesticides in Hawaii on behalf of the Climate Future Forum. I'm here to talk about how it affects your neighborhood and also everything around this longer island. So to start off on a baseline, pesticides are substances that are designed to kill insects. This can include bees, fungi, rodents, insects, things of that nature. Um, they're chemical, synthetic, or biological, and chemical and synthetic is more harmful than biological. And we're gonna be talking about general use pesticides today and restricted use pesticides. I'll refer to general use as G U Ps and restricted use as R U Ps. And example of G, of a G U P would be Roundup. So what are R U Ps? R U Ps are different than G U Ps because these require certification for the purchase and use. These are overall just restricted due to the fact that they cause severe environmental um and health impacts. And they're mostly commonly sprayed in north-central Oahu as well as west Kauai. And in twenty eighteen, the Hawaii State Legislature passed Act Forty-five, which stated that starting in twenty nineteen, all R U Ps must be reported to the Hawaii Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity annually, and these also implemented a hundred-foot buffer zones around schools. So some examples we have for you folks are one-three D and metamethium. In twenty nineteen, over a hundred seventy-five thousand pounds of one-three D was sprayed. This is a groundwater contaminant and highly prone to drift. It's also a carcinogen, so it's been this cancer. And it is toxic if inhaled. It causes respiratory impacts, dizziness, nausea, and vomiting. We also have metamethium, and twenty nineteen, thirty thousand pounds were sprayed. It is highly prone to drift. It can drift up to a mile. It is also toxic if inhaled. It can cause weakness, blurred vision, cramps, pupil constriction, sweating, lowering the pulse, and also muscle tremors. So here we have some exemptions to Act Forty-five. Uh, neomethyoids, neomethyoids are currently not classified as an R U P even though they are highly toxic, and they're also not subject to reporting. These are toxic to our native pollinators, pollinators and birds, and they are systemic, so they can be injected into the roots or seeds of plants and makes the whole plant toxic, which is different than just being sprayed. And overall, it's just lost in the soil. We also had experimental field trials, so major chemical companies such as Bayer, also known as Monsanto, and Syngenta has GMO crops on Hawaiian lands, which could have adverse consequences on our agricultural resources. And yes, these can be exempt from reporting, so it's easier for them to spray larger amounts and ignore the rules. So as you can see, Act Forty-five is a good start, but it is insufficient for our needs. The current buffer zones are only a hundred feet. But as stated earlier, metamethium does travel up to a mile. And um the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, and Earth pesticide Act legally requires applicators to follow rules on the label, but there is very little oversight on reporting, and it is easy for big companies to cut corners. So examples would be that applicators are not required for the time applied or the crop or pests they're trying to kill off the dilution rate or the site at which they applied. And overall, this basically nullifies the Field Care Act and also school buffer zones. And there's also no environmental testing, so companies and applicators can destroy the land and pass it on to the next owner. So here we have the form the applicator have to fill out annually. At the green, this is the actual form right here. So the green boxes are what they have to fill out. So this would include the active ingredient, the total usage, the area treated, and the date. But the white boxes are what they are required to fill out. So this is the pest that they're trying to kill off, the dilution rate, and the time at which it was applied. On the bottom left, we have a map of Oahu. The red shows areas with highly concentrated R U Ps, and then it levels off to like orange and the more yellowish bits. And then on the bottom right, we have a map of here in your neighborhood. So even though there is currently, or this data was from twenty nineteen, so back in twenty nineteen, there is no pesticides here, but overall, because of drift and groundwater contamination, it is still an issue. And then here we also have the school zones in your guys' neighborhood, um, and this is just important to point out to protect our K P D. So for some current ideas floating around, um, we need better reporting systems to ensure that there is more detail and accurate reporting. Uh, increasing buffer zones, having larger fines and punishments, classification of neomeths as an R U P, having environmental testing, especially when big companies are selling affected land, and having some transparency in labeling, even though something says Hawaii ground, it may be misleading because it does not mean it's organic. So how you can help, consider adopting resolutions. Our office, um, from Representative Perusso has actually drafted a resolution. We can send that to you guys to look over. Um, also share your experience and testify, hold community meetings such as this, sign up for emails to stay alert, um, contact your local officials, educate about pesticides used in schools, and stay in the farmers, support locally owned organic farms, and help farmers transition into more organic practices. Um, we also wanted to share Rewild Your Campus, which is an organization that is specifically dedicated to removing synthetic pesticides from school campuses campuses. They have lots of pilot programs. There was one recently on August nineteenth. Uh, they just do love outreach and collaboration, and overall, this is just a great way to get the community involved in. And overall, this is just a great way to get the community involved in pesticides and learn more about it. Um and they do focus on organic land care, biodiversity and health. And that's just a QR code, we'll link you to the website. And then here we also have some quick links. This is the Hoppa website, which is where all those maps earlier um came from. Some candle resources we have made and also uh again, the map series from Hoppa. So that is everything I have, thank you guys.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board, or Mr. Sun?
What organization are you from?
Um, so I'm working currently with Representative Caruso's office, but most of her work right now is from Climate Future Forum.
And what area does she represent?
She represents District forty-six, where the House of Representatives is.
And what is thirty-six? What?
It's um North Shore.
Okay.
So we had the highest concentration, right? When your map of the island was red, that's your district, right?
Yes, yeah.
Makes sense.
Oh, Mr. Ropati?
Yes. How does Hawaii compare to other places in the country?
Yeah, so um other states have already uh passed head restricted use pesticides bills. Um in California, they upped the school buffer zones to a quarter mile, um which is something that we're trying to work off of too. And in Vermont, they also passed uh no neonyx bill.
And you said the punishments are, what are the punishments and how are they regulated?
The punishments are just small fines, um just kind of like a slap on the wrist, especially for big chemical companies and especially with those experimental field trials uh who are exempted from reporting. They don't really get any punishments whatsoever.
But it's only if they get caught.
It's only if they get caught, yeah.
You say enforcement is very low.
Yeah, yeah, because the reporting is very little.
How how is it enforced?
Um, the BLNR uh enforces the rules and then also the HDAP, so the Hawaii Department of Energy.
Are there any more questions from the board or the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, so I do want to thank you, Olivia, for coming here. And then you on on your way, I'll give you some snacks.
Oh my gosh, thank you guys so much, thank you.
Up next, the next presentation is the State of Hawaii's Climate Change, Mitigation and Adaptation Commission on Climate Action Pathways Report. I think Bill is online instead of Jonathan Lance. Um, Bill, are you still?
I'm on.
Oh, hello?
Yep. Hi, I'm still here, so aloha, everyone. Um and thank you, Olivia, for that uh very informative talk on pesticides. Another one to keep an eye on is D-Quot. Uh it's just a nasty one, it's illegal in most countries, but not US. So um if you ever get around D-Quot, stay away from it. It's really bad with cancer and other things. Um anyway, um I want to thank you guys for letting me speak for just a few minutes. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yeah.
One or two, yes.
I think I can. Can you see my screen now? Let's see.
Um, nothing yet.
Hmm. There we go. All right, there it is. Hopefully you can see it.
Yes, we can see your screen now.
Okay. So um yes, I'm from the State Climate Commission. And um the Climate Commission is made up of all the counties as well as state departments. Um it's been around for a few years uh because climate change impacts are affecting Hawaii more so than other states. Uh it was enacted several years ago by the the legislature. And um so we're we operate mostly because of um uh a partnership between all of the state departments and counties and even the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And um and you know Hawaii State Energy Office and uh Department of Health, all the big offices. And um so what we've been working on though this last year and a half is developing a climate action pathways. Because climate change is affecting us pretty bad with rising sea levels, um drought conditions, loss of native forests, um increased temperatures, uh very hot, you know, and dry. Uh it's best to get a plan in place to help guide us in the future. And um human impact is really what's causing our our climate change upon us, it's happening. And it's basically our greenhouse gas emissions that's really just a um spiking. Uh over on the Big Island on on Mount Aloha is the NOAA Observatory. And there's a Keeling Curve that's been monitoring the carbon in the atmosphere from burning fossil fuels. And uh we've known about it since the Civil War, that burning so uh fossil fuels uh in it kind of creates an umbrella effect where it traps the heat in and makes our world hotter. And so um we're developing this climate action plan. We've been working on it for about a year and a half. We've had attended over eighty events statewide. We've worked with lawmakers, focus groups, we've had consultants that were even hired. And um community input, develop a a draft of the first first ever climate action pathways plan to help guide us in the future. And right now, we have it out for public input. And so that's why we're reaching out to neighborhood boards, we're doing library talk story sessions. I was just at the library here just a little bit ago, meeting with persons. And we've reached out to all groups. We send out a monthly newsletter and social media about things that are happening. And so this plan, this Climate Action Pathways Report, it's gonna be uh, we want to make Hawaii a little more affordable, healthy and safe. Um so we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And that's going to involve, you know, bringing more renewable energies online. Uh right now, Kauai is running at about fifty-five percent renewable energy because of KIUC. So that's a good model to take after. Um but also, we we need to do more replanting of our native forests. And there's several orgs out there already working on replanting native forests such as Aloha Tree Alliance and Department of Land and Natural Resources with Kahuna Natties replanting. There's lots of great orgs out there working on this. Um and you know, the Climate Commission cannot do all this alone. We're we are, I'm on grant funds, I only have a few months left of funding. But we depend on partners across the state to help achieve these things. But if you look there, there's a QR code on the screen. And um you can click that QR code and go to an online platform. You can review the Climate Action Pathways Report and give input. It's open through September thirtieth. We really want community feedback to help drive this. All of the counties have also developed their own climate action plan that are specific to the counties. Ours, however, has taken into account the county's reports and plans. And it's a kind of overarching for the entire state. And um uh so we have about eight different measures or um that we're focusing on, uh waste, energy, buildings, ground transportation, aviation, marine transportation and circular economy. And then that AFLU one is about replanting native forests and things like that. Agricultural, sustainable agricultural, things like that. So um anyway, we just want you guys uh let the community know. We'd love for you to look at it, give input, let us know what we're missing, if you have any concerns, um things you would like to see implemented in your community and just let us know. But uh we we still have a number of more events the rest of the month that we're attending. So you might see us at the Board of Water Supply event on September twentieth, things like that. But if you ever have anything, stop by, let us know. Um I think that's kind of it for my brief presentation. But I'll stop sharing my slide. Oh, actually, I have another slide I can show you here real quick. This is just a flyer that we uh we've been posting around and sending around to different groups. Some of you might have received an email about this or if you're on our newsletter too. So anyway, um you guys have any questions?
Any questions from the board online or in person? I do have an inquiry, Bill, um that last uh flyer that you showed us, are you able to email that to me? I don't think I've seen I've seen that, so we can email that so we can have it.
Sure, yeah, I can email that to you here shortly. Um right after the meeting, I'll send it to you, but yeah.
Do all three as well, um so I also want to forward it to Brandon so that way we can have it in the our Google Drive.
Okay, Olivia. I'll send all three to you, absolutely, yeah.
Just in case, but thank you so much. Um if, yeah, if there's no questions though from the community online or in person, thank you again, Bill, for presenting.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate this opportunity. And and all that you guys do is of a very important purpose for the community, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, aloha.
Aloha. Thank you. Up next is City Elected Official, Mayor Rick Langjardie's representative, Van Master Clark Bryant.
Aloha, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, good to hear you.
Fantastic, thank you. Just want to give you a quick update of the mayor's newsletter. Uh the link is in the chat. So the city honors Oahu's Purple Heart recipients. Heart breaks ground on new guideways and rail stations across the third segment of the rail, which is from Kalih to Kakaako. And then the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Region Nine, the administrator visits Honolulu Haleh to discuss housing and homelessness. New members of the Honolulu Youth Commission are sworn in. And then Oahu's junior lifeguards return to the state championship even on Maui with a historic victory. And again, that September two thousand and twenty-five edition of the mayor's newsletter is in the chat. Uh the the charter, the Honolulu Charter Commission is conducting its once-in-a-decade review of the city charter, which serves as Honolulu's constitution. Community members are invited to submit proposals by November seventh. The commission will also be holding community meetings in October. Dates and times and locations are available on the Charter Commission website. That website link is also in the chat. Okay, just one follow-up issue from our last meeting. This is involving a request to investigate restaurant customers using the trash bin belonging to a resident. Uh this was a resident at fourteen thirty-three Kamehameha the Fourth Road. Uh reports that Kamehameha Convenience, Fast Food and Groceries. At fourteen thirty-seven, Kamehameha the Fourth Road is not providing a public trash can for its customers. As a result, they are discarding waste in her private trash bin. From ENV, the request, they request a due date extension as they continue to investigate this matter. So we're gonna leave this as a concern for next report as well. Um and that's all I have for now, any questions or comments? Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions from the board online or in person? Mr. Sun?
What time are you performing tomorrow? At uh right, you're performing tomorrow, right?
Uh tomorrow's performance is for nine eleven, we have two performances. That's uh Thursday, so that twelve o'clock at Tamaran Park, Bishop Square. That's a a commemoration ceremony for the general public and business district area. And then tomorrow evening at Honolulu Haleh at five forty-five, we start a concert there in a ceremony for the mayor in celebration and commemoration of nine eleven. Fridays, uh every Friday, we're at the Palace at twelve o'clock noon. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much, um Mr. Brighton, have a good evening.
Mahalo, aloha, everyone.
Mahalo. Up next is uh City Elected Official Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos, Constituent Services Director Lynn Robinson. Okay, we're not seeing her online, so if she does pop up later though, um we will bring her back on. But we will just table uh Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos for now. Um up next is state elected officials, Governor Josh Green, Representative. No pending assignment if we don't have one uh already um online, no representative.
Oh, Kathy Neese here, and then uh she was gonna do a Q and A. And uh she gave us a statement uh of the Senator's report, uh I can read it to everyone.
Okay, so we'll we'll move on to Senator Donna McConnell Kim, official, Office Representative Kathy Neese. Did you want to or Kathy Neese?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was, she asked uh that we read the report and then and then she'll be hopefully available for a Q and A. Uh yeah, she said she's not feeling well uh today. Uh so to begin the report, uh Senator Kim joined the Senate Ways and Means Committee on their recent visit to Kauai. Uh and there is a Big Island visit scheduled later in November. A second point, uh Kalih Schools, Fer Kalihuka, Kapalama, Kahevi and Kalihuaena are taking advantage of Act thirty-five to expand library access and activities for students. A third point, uh Senator Kim will continue to support Kalih on reinstating the Kahevi Street program after meeting with uh Principal Uchita, Superintendent Mahoy and uh Neighborhood Board Kalihawi. Um she thanks uh board members, uh Mr. Kumali and Mr. Rojas for attending and participating at the meeting. Uh the next point, uh Senator Kim and uh Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos-Tamp are working to improve current signage at Lekua and Kalihie Streets uh on that intersection. Uh that's gonna be a a mayor's uh report concern for next month. Um there was a request by a resident uh that for an additional uh one-way or uh no right turn signage at the intersection due to uh ongoing improper right turns and insufficient uh current signage. Uh the next point, uh the Senator Kim will be uh distributing one hundred backpacks to Kalihie Elementary and Kapalama Elementary. Uh photos of Our Lady of the Mount's one hundred and fifty-fifth anniversary celebration are available on Senator Kim's social media. And the last point, uh she wanted to make an announcement. Uh Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit Heart is hosting a design workshop for Kalihie and Kapalama stations uh tomorrow, September, oh yeah, September eleventh, six to eight thirty PM at Kalaakawat Middle School Cafeteria. And that concludes uh Senator Kim's report.
Are there any questions um at this time from the Neighborhood Board members online or in person? Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, if you have any questions later on, of course, you can email them. Then we can send it directly to our representatives. Um but we'll we'll move on now to, and I hope Kathy Neese feels better either of the board, really, a little a little weather, myself too, but it's okay, I'm still still walking, still kicking. Um but next up is Representative Ikaihahasi, if he is online or in person. I don't think he's up. We will table him for now, um but we will move on to board business now. Approval of regular meeting minutes, Wednesday, August thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Mr. Louis LeMotta, motions, any second? Mr. Sun seconds, any discussion about the meeting minutes from August twenty, oh, August thirteen, twenty twenty-five? Do we have to edit the October fourth, no, we're great, because I thought Tyler was. I was prepared to, um, Mr. Louis LeMotta's, um, when you mentioned October fourth, the last meeting. I was wondering if it should be changed to eleven, but I guess not for
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to change this meeting, okay. I guess I don't need to do that, that was my only concern, but yeah, if there's no discussion, then we can go on to vote, um all those or
Yeah, yeah.
Or like any, any objections, right?
Very good.
I'm hearing no objections to um the meeting minutes for August thirteen. So is it Thursday? Thursday, August thirteen, should be Wednesday, right?
Oh, I'll fix that.
Okay. I guess with that with that amendment then, for Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, uh accepted as amended.
Okay, accepted as amended, okay. Hearing no objections, so uh we will, um, yeah, we'll just approve the meeting minutes. uh we will, um, yeah, we'll just approve the meeting minutes with that edit. I just caught that. That was supposed to be Wednesday. Okay. Yeah, thank you, everyone. Uh, next we'll move on though to committee reports and assignments. Um, of course, you can see no report uh if nothing happened from the last time we met. Um, or you can, of course, give us any update to what you're planning to do. You can go one by one. So State and County Budget Committee, Chairman Yizuno, who is not online. So we can move on to Sidewalk Esprym and Transportation Committee, Chair James.
Nothing to worry about.
Mahalo, thank you very much. Beautification Committee Chair Rondo Franklin.
An update I have for that. The next uh uh I'm still working on all the the signage and stuff that we are doing. I'm trying to start a new uh adopt the bus bench, so I will have that program up and running. So the residents around bus benches can either dial three-one-one or help us keep them clean and try to get a shelter for the people standing out in our area on the street for that. Uh, and I'm still trying to, uh, well, the rest of it is the Resolution Committee, because everything we tried to work over three years is in the next committee. So that's what I'm doing right now uh uh in updating. Thank you.
Thank you. And I I do see, was that an update for both resolution and beautification then?
You want me to do the resolution now or you talking about you that beautification? Beautification is I'm I'm starting a adopt the bus bench in our all of our area because our bus benches are either the people standing without shelter or they got graffiti on them or they need to be cut. So I'm doing that. I, once we get our T-shirts, I'm gonna knock on doors and hand out stuff and see if I can get people that lives close to the bus benches to either call three-one-one or help us, you know, keep it a little clean around that area if they will volunteer to do it. So that's the new program I'm starting.
Thank you. It's just for beautification. I do see Henry Kennedy has signed up.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Um, this is Henry Kennedy. I'm with the Department of Transportation. Um, I'm, I'll be attending the meeting quarterly. If you have any uh D O T questions regarding highways, um, you can direct them to me and I can gather the information and report back to the Neighborhood Board. Um, I'll drop my email address in the chat and I guess phone number.
Thank you so much. Is the Department of Transportation city? State, okay.
State. State.
Okay, state, okay. Thank you so much, Henry.
Thank you.
So when I say the next time you're gonna join us?
Let's see, this is September, so the next time would be, next time would be December. If you have anything urgent, send me the questions and I'll try to report earlier. I'll send I'll send back a response via email or I'll find some way to report back to you.
So if we do, can we mention one concern then right now?
Sure.
So the uh Leiki Leiki and School Street, coming down Leiki Leiki, it was supposed to, the speed signs are supposed to be changed to thirty-five miles an hour. They're still twenty-five going in both directions. Uh, they were gonna increase the speed uh during that area, but the signs haven't been changed.
Okay, they're supposed to be changed to thirty-five, still twenty-five.
Yeah. Still twenty-five.
Okay, I'll check with my people and get back to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Another uh board member, Bryce Litten?
Yes, I just wanna put in real quick that the signs, I unless they changed them back, they were changed to thirty-five.
Hmm, nope, nope, never changed, never.
Oh, I I thought I saw them at thirty-five, but if not, uh, because I want to thank him for it, but I was surely went down and did that, but all right, but I might could be wrong, but thank you very much.
Board number Rojas?
Yes, I think uh I think it was changed, but in 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 a different direction. They did, they did make a change. The the change is they put, they put a sign on it. They they put a speed sign where where it says um traffic enforcement, uh traffic light enforcement. That's that was the change. But the speed limit did not change.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas, for the clarification. Um, yeah, and oh, the circle, yes.
Mr. Kennedy says we'll come in December, but we aren't by. Yeah, so you got ready to know, you know, we, yeah.
Oh, that's right, okay. So, yeah, Mr. Kennedy, where you have recess in December or would you be coming in January?
Or November.
Or November.
November, November.
November. Thank you, okay. Well, do November, oh, have you on our November agenda?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Um, okay, no. Thank you. Now we'll go back to uh no Sustainability Committee. Co-Chairs Simeon Rojas and Alan Kumalai, if you guys would like to announce anything.
On Alan. Yes, as Alan mentioned earlier, um, he will be, they will be conducting that team on Saturday, uh eight o'clock, as he mentioned earlier, on the residence concern. So, um, that's what we got so far at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Nonex RPZ Committee Chair Alex from online.
No updated information, still uh soliciting uh registration or permits. So no, no more new information.
Thank you. Um, Communications Committee Chair Chris Litten.
Yep, um, so we're we're still rolling out with our uh monthly newsletter. Um, I spoke with Randy about this a couple of months ago. Uh, the new the newsletter um is to give uh community information as far as like different events coming up, but we also wanna highlight what each chairperson or each board member is working on their project. So whatever project you're working on, please let us know, send us pictures, little information so we can highlight what you're working on um either within the month or within the quarter, uh just so we can highlight uh different projects that you're working on and um that we could kind of, you know, just to hold us accountable uh for being board members as well, so.
Thank you. We're just waiting. Um, okay, thank you so much, Mr. Louis LeMotta. Next Resolution Committee, Mr. Cyglid.
Good afternoon. I see Lynn is up. I was maybe get an update on how Miss Robinson. We're we're still working on the camp of rec center. I was hoping we'd get an update on when they're planning on tearing it down uh and hopefully that don't take ten years. Uh, the next resolution is the District Park. Uh, we talked about it. Uh, and we're hoping that uh we get an update on the roof or the facade of what they're gonna do. Uh, and uh I was gonna talk to uh Lynn is here now about the District Park. We have to clean the park for them. They can't clean the park for themselves, and they refuse to provide any other assistance or work to do it. So uh maybe after Lynn talk, I can give you a better update on uh uh what's going on, but maybe you should let Miss Robinson go.
No problem. We can table Resolutions Committee for now. Um, I don't know if the committee you're doing.
We feel it.
Let Lynn talk, okay. So we'll circle around back um to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam, Constituent Services Director Lynn Robinson.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, board members, community members. I apologize if, um, I was having some difficulties getting on, so I apologize if I missed my queue. Um, I had just have a couple of updates and then I'll do my best with the park and um your other things related to your resolutions. Um, the this month, Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation, so Heart and Contractor Tutor Perini, um, Perry Ene Corporation are hosting their design workshop. It's actually happening tomorrow. So on Thursday, September eleventh from six to eight thirty at the King David Kala Kaua Middle School Cafeteria. Is this redundant? Did somebody already say this? Yes.
Senator.
Okay, I saw the blank stare. Okay, I apologize. All right, I wanna I wanna follow up on a on a riser um from Mr. Soon, from James. Um, we have, so DTS got back about the request for um a no um for timed parking signs on Numana Road. This was from ages ago, like from January twenty twenty-four. But um I think that it basically re, it does relate to what we saw with the parking signs, but I just wanna let you know that they apologized for the late response and according according to the legal records, majority of the other side of Numana Road from Kalihii Street to Valley View Drive has an existing twenty-four-seven parking restriction, which includes the area of concern. As such, we do not recommend the installation of a time-limited parking restriction in the area as the existing parking restriction is already in effect at all times. However, we do recommend the installation of a no parking here to co- um here to corner sign restriction on the eastern side of Numana Road from Kalihii Street. Additionally, in the course of our field inspection, we identified numerous faded, missing, no parking signs, warning signs and pavement markings. As such, we have issued a work order through the Department of Facility Maintenance to install, replace and repaint the signs and pavement markings. And then there's there's just a number to follow up. So that's good news. It sounds like some of the signs are being have been replaced, but we're still waiting for um some pavement markings. So I need to um also put, I will put um council members uh newsletter in the chat for everyone. And then, um, were we asking for an update on Kalihii Valley District Park?
Yes.
Um, the the update that I have is that um there's a letter that's gone out to the to the Department of Design um and construction, asking for an update, a status update on everything that's happening over there. And we have not received the response yet, so I will get that to you as soon as I can. But it is not, um, you know, they're they're aware that we're tracking, they're aware of the site visit. Um, the Director of Parks, I think I reported la- last time, and I have had a lengthy conversation about this. And then again, DDC is aware that council member has um dedicated his entire appropriation to the improvements over there. So I know that you had mentioned about the cleanup. I think that you guys were gonna do the walls and stuff. Or members Franklin?
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that still, is is that still in play? Do you need any any of our assistance with that?
Yes.
How can I help?
What they, Christian, if they told Chris, I hope Chris would come up, that we can go over there and clean, but they will not provide personnel. They will not provide cleaning buckets, rags, nothing. They stated it's their filthy gym. We wanna help. And they're saying that they will provide us with nothing. No cleaning material, no buckets, no rags. Uh, hopefully they'll give us water. Uh, but we need to go in there and clean their filthy gym up, and they will not assist.
Interesting. Um, I think I was tracking that we were being connected with the parks cleanup guy with Denny. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And Denny's response was that they didn't have any resources to put towards the.
That's that's correct. I I I I spoke with him yesterday, and he said that they, in the beginning of the year, they had a bunch of rags and and all these supplies, but because they gotta use it throughout all the other gyms, they don't know what happened to all of that, so that was his response to me. He said, so he said, if your if your um community members have extra rags at home and maybe some buckets that you can, we're gonna use it, um, you know. So I told him that we'll we'll provide the manpower, but does the gym not have any cleaning supplies that we could use or? So that was his response to me yesterday.
Okay, let's us talk offline. I think that we can hooey up and we can make sure that we get those supplies, okay?
Also, also the 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 date moved to the eleventh, it's October eleventh, because they they got back to me October fourth, they have an event there. So we have to move it to October eleventh from eight o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock.
Okay, so let's talk offline. Just kind of kind of imagine in your minds, because you guys are probably better than me at spatial relations, about the amount of Pine Sol and rags and maybe even like like a contraption that would have a long pole with the rag on it or a couple of those that we might need. And then I'll see what I can I can do to get some donations or, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Well, how many people you think might show up? Whoever, yeah.
Should we have a sign up meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
So at least we just keep an account of who's coming, and more than Mary, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So at least we know ahead and maybe we can also make sure we have enough snacks and water to provide.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that sounds beautiful, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's try, yeah, let's try to um to nail down a time and maybe we can even, um, I don't know, maybe we could put it in our in our district newsletter or we could um reach out to others in the area somehow to get other volunteers, unless you think that's overkill. Like, do we need, do we need ten people?
More the better.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then maybe it is something that we um try to put a shout out for for supplies and people power and just try to get as many people over there as we can.
I just have a question, like, if the people who are regularly supposed to be cleaning this place, right, don't know where their cleaning supplies are, right? Are they are they actually cleaning, are they actually cleaning the place?
My best, my best answer is that there really isn't um a regular cleaning schedule over there. That they're they're understaffed and that's probably not a priority, so um, this is where we step in, just the same as the way we're we're cleaning up the parks um in the exterior, right, on the grounds. Many times it takes the volunteers to pitch in and and do it there. So um in a perfect world, it certainly wouldn't be like that. In a well-funded world, it wouldn't be like that, right?
So there are open, like, there's not as much staff as there's supposed to be.
I don't know, I I that's my best, um, that's my best guess. And I have, I have never heard of an interior parks facility cleaning crew. While we do have the parks people that come around and do the outside parks, so I'm not saying that it never happens, but I don't think that there's likely a regular cleaning schedule there. Um, I'm I'm disappoint, I'm as disappointed as anybody else that to kind of get this news. Like, because we've done many, many parks cleanup to include at Kalihii Valley District Park, to include um painting, um benches and walls and all of that, and all of that um would be provided. We have things like rakes and dust pans that we got to kind of augment. But um this is the first that, you know, I've ever heard of anyone being told that there's just no supplies for any of it, so. Um.
Is there way we could confirm if interior cleanup is even something that is being done, like, like, is anybody even tasked with that?
I could ask that question for sure.
Or is to know if this is something that's just never done?
Mm-hmm. I can absolutely ask that question, if that's a thing.
Thank you. I also see two people have their hands up online here. Simeon, yeah, so Simeon Rojas has his hand up. Mr. So, are you, or?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Good evening Lynn, um, my updates and concern for, um, the neighborhood security watch, um, during patrols. And also drive and walk. Uh, we identified illegal dumpings on multiple several streets, corners. And there were like, you know, big items like beds, um. You know, things that we couldn't, you know, just pick up and put away. But anyway, um, it's been consistent on those areas. So we, I, we wanted to, um, request for. Uh, no dumping site and violator will be. Um, fine for any kind of, of illegal dumping. Um, is there a way you can help us on requesting those signs? On those specific street, and I will identify all those different corners and areas that we identify. Thank you.
Hi Simeon, um, yeah, if you email me the sites. So it seems like it's two-pronged, is the illegal dumping still out there? Do you also want me to put requests in to have the illegal dumping removed?
Yes. And then it designed and, you know, to at least. Let the community aware that, you know what, that that's not the place to, um. There's, there's a place where we can dump those, or if they need help, we can, you know, help them out. It's not on the street corner, so. Um, as we did a walk. You know, there's, in Kalii Valley area, there was, there was other places, not, not as one particular site, but there's maybe about. Four or five of them at the most.
Okay.
So I will, I will, I will send you those pictures and also I will, I will, uh, identify those places.
Perfect. Um, I will request the signs. It is, it is not likely at all that they'll do like custom signs that we say. You know, it'd be super helpful if you go to the dump with your stuff. Although I get the spirit of it. Um, but they, but illegal, you know, no, no dumping signs, and that's pretty much what it says. Seem to be a thing that's already printed through the, through, um, the Department of Facility Maintenance, so let's try. Let's try and see, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Um, and I also see Mr. Franklin's hand up online.
Hi Lynn, just to butt in real quick, last, last, a couple of weeks ago, me and Alan went. To the, the park on Kalii Boulevard, I can't think of the name of it, and spoke to the director, maybe Alan can say the name for me. And that park has a full-time janitor. And their park is, in their park, I mean, their recreation center is clean, really clean. They have two boxing gyms, they're clean. And me and Alan spoke to the rest there for like twenty minutes, and we watched their janitor. With a bucket, he cleans their place all the time. So, it, it's just right up the road on Kalii Boulevard. So I know they have in-house cleaning, because they have a full-time janitor. So, and their place is spotless. So I don't know why we have this filthy gym with no cleaning, uh, equipment, and no one cleans that gym. When I know they clean the other one, because me and Alan spoke to the director.
Well, that is excellent feedback.
You're welcome.
And, um, so another city park. That, that it's a kind of, is an apples-to-apples situation?
Yes, it's apples-to-apples. Uh, Alan, what's the name of the park we went to?
Oh, Kalakaua, Kalakaua Gym.
And, and, and it is a spotless gym, and they have a full-time janitor. Cause I seen him with the mop buckets, walking around mopping things and cleaning. And he's the one letting me and Alan in, because he was sitting in his car on lunch break, when he came back, he opened the door for us and let us talk to the, the director. And we spoke to her, and, and, and if you go down there, and if we're talking what, five miles from the district gym? Their place is really clean, so.
Yeah, it would be, right? Because they have somebody. I said it would be, that makes perfect sense that they're gonna have a very clean facility, because they've got somebody in there. I will search again with Director Thea and, and see. Maybe, you know, why there isn't a janitor in the other place, and also ask the question if it is. If there's any cleaning that happens at the district park. And, um, and I'll make sure that she knows that. Um, we're not being afforded any supplies for a, a, you know, community-based cleanup, so.
Or person, or personnel, it's their gym. It's their district gym. And they're like, we're, wanna assist them and help them clean, but they say you have no personnel to come clean your dirty gym? Or, or, or you, I know you're paying somebody to clean, why aren't they cleaning?
All good questions, all very good questions. My first question is why has that beautiful. Facility that had, you know, huge appropriations to be built out for that community been allowed to go into such disrepair? So.
Yeah, thank you.
All good questions, and it's, yeah. It's, it's unacceptable, so we'll keep after it. And we'll, we'll find our own resources for this go-around if we have to, we'll find our own supplies. I'm gonna try my best.
Thank you. Um, I think Chris, um, did you have your hand up, that you still wanna? Okay, well, we do see Rapati has his hand up, Mr. Lila.
Hi Lynn, um, this. This topic kinda, um, makes me sad. That we don't have, because I grew up at that gym, our family grew up in that gym, and so this. Please try, do all you can to help that gym out. That'll help out Kalii Valley Homes, which is Camp Core, and all the kids that were, lived around that area. I am currently at Camp Field Park, Kamamea Field Park, and there's a lot of kids here using this facilities, but to not have. Usage of the facilities up at Kalii Valley Homes breaks my heart to hear that, and to hear that. There's, we don't have anyone that makes it a welcoming place for our community. And, you know, the, the resources that they have. And when we did that walkthrough and we went up to the boxing area. I was really sad and it hurt my heart, because my brother grew up in there and my cousins grew up in there, I to see it all. Just not operate, they can't operate, and also in the outside, the facility that you took us to. Where they used to have the Kalii Valley Neighborhood Board is all torn down, and it's, it breaks my heart to hear. Our community is like this, and we, we can't do anything about it. Yeah, so please try. You, you've helped us out in Kalii Valley with our church situation, please, that's all I ask. Thank you so much.
We're gonna keep after it. Like I said, it's just, it's not acceptable and we'll. We're gonna, you know, it might take some time, but we're not gonna let it go.
Thank you so much. If there are no more, um, questions for Lynn Robinson. Um, we do wanna thank you Lynn for, um, for coming back, or coming online and recording when you can.
Thank you for accommodating me. I apologize for the disruption.
No worries. Have a good evening.
You too. Aloha.
Aloha. Uh, we'll circle around back to Resolution Committee, uh, Mr. Franklin. He's online. Um, Mr. Franklin, did you wanna report or, um, an update for Resolution Committee?
Yes, he's definitely.
Okay, but we'll circle around back, but we'll go to Joint Committee Chair James So. For any reports, right?
So first update is August thirtieth. Bunch of us went to Salvation Army and we did a tour there. And we had, uh, it was between, uh, our neighborhood board and Kalii Palama. Was able to tour the facility, learn who they were, what they do, and meet some of the, uh. Residents there. Fascinating story. Um, I really think we should support Aloha, uh, Salvation Army for everything that they do. I mean, extremely, extremely helpful. Uh, big thing that they're gonna do. They're also gonna arrange a, a site tour for us later on to see the crop center. So we'll be able to go up Kapale and tour that center too. And finding out the history about the crop center, that was fascinating also. Didn't realize it was tied to Ronald McDonald. So that, that's pretty fascinating. Uh, my next event that I'm doing, uh, is gonna be a Keiki Okaina. Uh, I'm bringing on Aloha United Way. I'm, uh, gonna do the first Saturday of November. I'm inviting all the neighborhood boards there and city council. And the representative of the senate to hear what, uh, for us, all of us to hear what Keiki Okaina does. And how their program ties to, uh, Aloha United Way's Alice program. And how we're able to do that, and then after that, I'm gonna do a tour with Aloha United Way. And have all their cohorts within the Aloha United Way speaking up. But that'll be next year, because these are big things that I'm planning. Uh, in the meantime. Uh, I would like to pick one day, not Wednesday, well, maybe, just not the second. Or third Wednesday of the month, be the first or fourth, or Thursday. To have a joint meeting with the Kalii Palama, uh, Neighborhood Board. Found the spot, Kalii Valley District Park. Uh, they have a room, forty people that would, uh, could fit. Uh, and I'm gonna include the Kalii Valley Neighborhood, uh, Homes and KPT also to that. And find out what really needs to be done and how we're able to help and assist. You could probably get some nonprofits in the area to join if, if the concerns happen. And how, how we can get more resources to them and, and help out as much as possible. So, um, not sure if you guys want to do one. Um, but let me know what they think it is, Wednesday or Thursday would be better. Any suggestions?
Oh, I can say that this came up at the Chairs and Vice Chairs Meeting on Monday, and so, uh, if you do want a. Joint meeting, you'll have to submit, um, at least one month, if not two months in advance would be better. Uh, for a date, and, um. And there might be additional rules, like maybe one of the boards might have to give up their regular meeting. That month in order to make that happen, but I'm not sure.
Well, this is not a joint, joint meeting, this is like a committee meeting, right?
Oh, okay, but, um, but, uh, if it's just a committee meeting, then, then, that's, that's different.
So that, that, we're doing committee meetings, not joint. Neighborhood board needs.
Ah, I see, okay.
So that's why my, my committee is called Joint Committee. So.
I was gonna ask, I, I thought I read something about, yeah, the, the resolution, or I don't know if that's. Probably, yeah, in order to have a joint meeting. I, I can follow up, but yeah, just.
Okay, yeah, we can talk.
I said, we, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then, um, oh, we have some, like, one more.
Um, wait, um, whoa, sorry. Is it about, um, Joint Committee or?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what comprises the committee, who's involved, I mean, what?
Whoever, whoever wants to attend and whatever. Community topics they wanna talk about. So, um. One thing that Kalii Palama wants to do is help, you know, the, the KPT. And Kalii Valley Homes in their situations, how we're able to help them. But we don't know what they want or what they need, so we're leaving it up to the community, right? So do they need resources, do they need, you know, information, right? Where do we get it? How do we assist them? It's not an agenda that. I'm defining, but it's the, uh, agenda that I'm asking.
Then what, what is the timeframe during the day? What, what time of day is this?
It will be most likely, we have to be out by eight if we do Kalii Valley District Park. So maybe from six to eight, or.
In the evening.
Yeah. Either on Wednesday or a Thursday. But it's way probably us to interact with the, more with the community. And bring it closer to them, right? And we're giving them more time to talk, more time to discuss, instead of three minutes. So, uh, that's what this is more about, right? So, we cannot assume.
Jane, you start to be open to the public, yeah? We're gonna announce on like how we announce, uh, board needs.
Uh, yes, um. Yeah, the, the committee, um, should be publishing, uh, agendas. We should be distributing, like, um, how we do the mail-out with the regular reading agenda and minutes, yeah, committees.
There's some people who will be notified about this joint committee.
Yeah, committees also will need, uh, agendas and minutes distributed, yeah.
And announcement.
Yeah.
May I have, I see Simeon Rojas's hand, uh, Mr. Rojas?
Yes, Mr. Soon, I have, I have one question for you, um, I know, I'm sorry I didn't, I wasn't able to attend the Salvation Army visit, but, um. My question to you is, um, what can the Salvation Army do for Kalii Valley? Is there anything that you found out about that, or? Is there anything that you can tell the community, like what, what they can offer us, or? You know, what's gonna do good for Kalii Valley, or even Kalihii? Thank you.
So, what Salvation Army, that location does, and that we went to, they help people who are, uh, doing substance abuse. So, people who have, are alcoholics, or maybe they're drug addicts. And they have no way of getting off of. Knowing a way to get, become sober, right, or. Um, they have a place, a place where they are able to go for six months. And stay clean for six months, if they wanna stay longer, they could stay longer, up to a year, I think it was. If I'm not mistaken, and then. Even after the year, they still have time to go back and celebrate on, uh, two days out of the week. Right, and they all get together and they, they get together, there's potluck, so they have a community that they're able to. Lean on when times are tough, right? When they go to other places, you know, they're on their own. This is more of a community, uh, a safe place. Uh, and, yeah, they, they move on and a lot of them stick around, and.
Yeah, I don't comment about that. Simeon, you know, when you asked about what the Salvation Army can do for the community. Uh, I remember they, they told us they just half fill, they had like forty beds available. That not occupied, and you don't need insurance.
Free.
Salvation Army, uh, uh, financed the whole, uh.
Program.
Program. But like other rehab programs, you need insurance. Salvation Army, uh, paid for the whole thing. And they give, uh, a whole bunch, I think they only have filled right now. So they can handle more people, so we're gonna put that up to the community. If you interested in, uh, getting a substance, uh, addiction recovery. To, uh, check out the Salvation Army.
Well, that reminds me, you should reach out to Major.
Yeah, I think, I think I would, I would like the, I would like to recommend that we should put them on our newsletter. That all this good information that you guys talk about can be passed on to our community for Kalii Valley.
Yes.
Another thing, we should reach out to Major, because they, they wanna leave, right, and, and help out within the community. So for gym cleanup, we could ask them if they wanna come in and help clean up. So, we will ask them.
Will we participate with them, or they come with a big group?
Yeah, so, so ask them.
Yeah, they look forward to it.
So should, should we put, uh, article or some kind of information about Salvation Army on our, our, um, newsletter on Kalii Valley? From Kalii Valley Newsletter? So that our community in Kalii Valley would benefit on all those kind of information?
Yeah, if someone writes it up, or if we put something together of all the information about Salvation Army. Then we can put it on the newsletter. Simeon, do you have any other follow-up questions? You do have about, um. That's it for now, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. So you see Rapati has his hand up, Mr. Lila?
Ah, yes, uh, James, two things. Uh, this combined, what do you remember, the committee you're talking about? Uh, and all these nonprofits and seeing what's out there in the community. Is this a follow-up from Senator Donna Mercado Kim's community information she had at Framington High School?
It's not really a follow-up, because I was working on this before she did it, so, but it's in, uh, joint with it. So but it's in uh joint with it, so.
Okay, so it's kinda like a follow up for, cause she, but well, she didn't open it up to the community and it seems like you're opening it up to the community. Uh instead of doing, well, it kinda sounds like you're trying to do a town hall meeting. Is that what it is?
Well, in the beginning, it would be, right? Because we don't know what they want and what their need is. So.
Yeah.
So that's be the first meeting, right?
What would, what would be the purpose of this?
How can we help, what can we do, what resources do they need?
You talking about uh Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board?
Yeah, you know, what can we do, where where can we point them, right? There's so much resource out there, but we want to use.
Right, you should have a a a a community event, an informational community event. And just show them what's out there. Cause again, they don't know what you, they don't know what the board knows as far as resources. So if you're gonna just have them kinda just speak it out, but not knowing what's out there? I think it's best that if if you have this town hall meeting, you should have those outside organizations set up a table, so at least they can, they know that they exist.
Well, this is, this is gonna be up, this is gonna be ongoing every monthly, right? So uh I will ask questions, they'll let us know. And then I'll bring the community people at later meetings, right? So if they say, well, we want to talk about X, Y, and Z, I'll bring X one month, Y the next month, and Z the next month. Uh I don't know who to invite right now, right? And I don't know what subjects we're gonna talk about. So the first one is asking questions, and then the next one will be answering the questions.
So does KPT fall under Kalih Valley or do they fall under Kapalama Kalih Palama?
Yeah.
So you would actually have to get into their newsletter, right? To inform the community.
I I'm working with their uh uh chairperson. That's why it's called a joint meeting.
To send information to their members, their neighborhood?
Yeah, so I'm working with their chair, we could talk offline about this.
Okay, I just wanna understand where you're going, because.
Yeah, we we we'll talk offline about this.
Yeah, if you could get, cause you're targeting only KPT. But then Kalih Palama goes all the way to Ho uh Kalih Kai. And I know you wanna talk later, but you know, I just wanna get it now, so that way we can see where you're trying to go in that direction. Thank you.
Yeah, basically, basically, it's all the low income housing within the Kalih area. So that's what I I'm I'm focusing on. So isn't just Kui Valley Homes, not just uh KPT, but you know, helping out Mayor Wright and all the other homes, uh low income housing, right? But it's easier for us, because Kalih Valley Homes is in our area. And Kalih Palama has so much more. So I'm going out there for me what's easier. And then we'll we'll move out from there.
Thank you very much. Um we will be moving on now to Representative Ikai Kahasi, since he, we just saw him walk in. Would you like to grace us with your presence and report?
I'm sorry that I uh wasn't here for the rest of the meeting, so forgive me if I mentioned things that um already been discussed. But you know, uh I've been thinking about the the new changes of the intersection of of Halla Drive and Kapalama. And um you know, I think it's gonna take some time for the community to get accustomed to to the to the fact that it's now a four way stop. And uh I I got a phone call this afternoon from one resident who was the back of Kalih Valley specifically raised this problem of, you know, people are still kinda speeding through the intersection and you know, now they're breaking the law, they 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 didn't know that there was a change to the law. And so um I was thinking about maybe organizing a community sign leaving act at that intersection, just you know, like how sometimes the cops do it where it says, you know, please slow down or I think for hours it could just be, this is not a four way stop, you have to stop. Um so I was thinking about doing that maybe Monday afternoon, but during um uh peak driving time, like around three o'clock or something like that, if if anyone's interested in in participating.
Thought there was a study to do it, roundabout.
I I don't know if the the status is uh if they're still contemplating roundabouts. Uh I I don't know, I'm sorry.
Now, would be a lot, would move the traffic a lot faster, roundabout.
For always, yeah.
Yeah.
Roundabout would be great, absolutely, um but we have a four way stop.
That this month, coming Monday, you wanna?
I was thinking about doing that Monday afternoon, maybe three.
Fifteen thirty, is that better?
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay, after P M. Would be like an hour maybe to the forecast?
Yeah, a little short, hour.
An hour, so pretty forecast.
Yeah, um.
Who will meet the signs?
That's what I'm thinking right now, I'm thinking I'm gonna have my office staff take the signs. Do you see the time to now or next next month to get some stuff?
Say, ever up, it's always not now, slow down.
Four way stop. Exactly. Uh let's see what else, um I'm just curious, two minutes left, okay?
No, no, two minutes is is so far, you have three minutes.
I have three, three minutes, of course. How are how are folks um reacting to the to the shooting of Charlie Kirk today?
This is funny, it's sad, it 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 shouldn't have happened.
This is an open question, I don't, I don't know.
Well, we just a reflection of all the shooting in the past. I mean, every shooting is unnecessary, senseless, senseless. And you know, but you keep going.
This one is more political, unfortunately.
Well.
So.
No matter what the reason for the shooting, any shooting is shooting happening. Political, racial, uh mental, I mean, yeah. Somebody got shot and killed, you know?
Yeah. Is the last thing I can add for Sir James?
You wanna talk about your own side project?
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna mention that, uh so we have um we primed the walls in the in the space of for twenty four six Kalih Street. It's that, it's the the retail spot that used to have a broken window right across Kalihuka Elementary School. Um I I just took over the lease, just so that so we could start doing some community work in there. Um got the window fixed, and that's that's an improvement. The the walls are now um primed, like you know, it's all white inside. Um I think my staff was in there um after hours, so not on state time. We they could put the first coat of like color on the walls. And then we're looking at like shebaise, boba tea, stuff that would be appealing for the kids across the street at the elementary school. Um and then we're looking for opportunities to, maybe do some tutoring or stuff that is uh useful for the community. So if anyone has any ideas, let me know and I'll be taking agent. Hoping that we can sell some simian, some produce inside the store.
You know, I think, you know, past, they took over one crosswalk, so the kids would cross the street, right?
In the middle, yeah, right.
They took down, right?
Yeah.
There is another one though.
So if you put that, if you put that in a store and the kids were gonna cross the street, we're gonna put the crosswalk back.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, no, they, it's a federal thing, right? They they're trying to get rid of crosswalks and.
Right, in the middle of the block, something.
Yeah, so.
The the problem, as I understand it, you know, the the city folks can correct me, is that, you know, the city uses a particular version of the federal guidelines.
Right, right, yeah.
And I think it's just part of it is a matter of like updating the version that was used. Or also being willing to say, you know.
Yeah, a Hawaiian version.
Yeah, sure, the Kalih version, the Kalih version should control.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh but yeah, I I think that whole area should be more kind of a pedestrian centered area.
Let's take the Filipino uh national flag there as a a crosswalk, you know, for.
Okay, yeah, we can make that section of Kalih Street a mall.
I mean, I would love that. No, no, that would, that's what I would actually like to do, I don't know if you're joking.
You guys looks like Colleen and I know.
Like a like a pedestrian mall, I would love that. Okay, let's make that your, let's tell people it's your idea. That they could be mad at you.
I'll take the heat on that.
Okay.
But but how would you? From the traffic, right, where would the bus go, where would everything else go? Because everyone that comes from Kamayamia School gotta go down through there. And they're all going to kind of.
Or you're sticking it out of the box.
Yeah, we just gotta think of the traffic, right? Maybe if the uh we could make the left turn right before they enter to go back on Leiki Leiki again, that would solve it, but man, they they got rid of that for traffic. You know, there's a lot more things than just turning into a mall.
I do like the creative ideas, I really do. And I, what I'm hoping is that really being a.
People think, you know, open up the discussion.
Yeah, that's right. You know, the area between the KC Market and, you know, like that whole area is kinda like the center of Kalih Valley. Make it like a little town, it'd be really nice.
Yeah, it would be, but we just gotta figure out how we're gonna rerun the traffic. Gotta take the park away.
Move the school. Yeah, take it out of the box, bro.
Okay, I don't know about that box. Ten years ago.
So this is a report, what else are you reporting or working on?
There's, so there's a whole bunch of things for next legislative session, that that's that's kinda the primary thing. And um I apologize, I don't have the the list of bills.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused, because I think when you come, I guess I expect a report, like what you're working on or what your commitment is to the community, you know, so. I mean, it's good that you have a conversation with us, but I'm just wondering, you know, if you will give a report for, you do have a newsletter that comes up?
You know?
Yeah.
We um we haven't been as, that's something that we need to do a better job at, I think it's just, you know, having a a regular newsletter.
We need to work on, okay. I mean, I know you knew, but I guess I'm accustomed to having a report given and then we ask you questions, you know?
Sure, okay, yeah, I can do that better.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I also do have a really appreciate the the feedback, because kids' sense.
I did wanna thank you for showing up to Kaibai for the meeting.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure.
And earlier, uh Senator Kim's aide did mention that Senator is in favor of seeing the Kaibai Stream reopen. But thank you for being present at that meeting.
Sure.
And you know, I just know, uh the gym cleanup got moved from October four to October eleven.
Okay.
Yeah, from A M to eleven.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If you use our available.
With our electric change on calendar, thanks.
Did I just make one statement? The history of the crosswalk is because school went there. And if you draw a straight line between Lomani Street and Lomani Street on the other side, that's another intersection. That's why there's a crosswalk, it seems like it is a little street. But if you draw a line straight across, the school cut it off.
It got rid of the street.
Yeah, so that's why it is a crosswalk.
It used to be, it used to be a a corner.
Yeah, because long time ago, that was the fire station right there. Where every park is. So that's the fire, my dad got the fire station moved to Careful Road. So the school, that's the so the school cut cut through. So that's the history of the crosswalk.
Okay, take to the background.
That's my line, preschool, I didn't know that. Thank you. Um other questions though, for Mr. Hesse and the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing, no, thank you so much.
Thank you.
How we can eat, you know? Um do you wanna circle around the back, see if Mr. Franklin, if he did want to uh report for Resolution Committee, I don't know if you're back on the line or back um near your monitor, but if, yeah, not, oh, Mr. Franklin?
No, I'm the Resolution Committee, Lynn updated on that. Uh my next uh project on the on that is to see if we can get every uh cameras in Kalihuka Park uh and work with Representative Hesse, because uh everyone talks about that corner. But my my thing on that is to turn that park into a a working park, because that park is not a working park, that park, uh if you run on the grass, you'll break your leg. Uh it's unkept. And try to make it where we can put a track around the inside of it and make the grass where the kids can play on the grass, because they're in Kalih. At Kalihuka School, we have four hundred and thirty elementary students who are playing on concrete, because they can't use the grass of the park to play on. And they don't have any murals on the walls, it's just an ugly wall. And we want to talk about KC Market and the shops across the street. But we have to make the park beautiful enough that people visit it and you can walk on the grass. And the kids can, the four hundred and thirty elementary uh uh schoolchildren have a safe green spot to play on instead of playing on concrete. That's my next resolution that I'm working on. We also, Lynn updated us on the on the district gym, whether they're gonna do the roof or the facade, but they know we're watching that. So uh and then uh the next thing I wanna know is uh it's been ten, maybe it's gonna be twenty years before they even tear down the rec center at uh Cam Four area and give them a rec center that's a category five that they can have meetings at. And it seems like everything we asked for, it takes twenty years to do, that, you know, some people in office now be dead. So I'm sticking with those, trying to get those seven resolutions that we put out last year, to bring them to fruition. And that's what I'm working on in the resolution, probably, because we we voted on it, they're out there, now we just gotta track them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Um next will be, um oh, actually, Mr. Leoa has his hand up?
No, I just wanted to uh thank Mr. Franklin for that. This is the, we we are from the Arlita Mount uh parish, and it's up in Kalih Valley. But this is the reason why we're at Kamayamia Field, is because Kalihuka Park is not a welcoming place and a safe place for our youth, and that's why we're here at Kalih. So thank you, Mr. Franklin, for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Um now we can move on to the other reports, which is Chair's report. Uh I just have a checklist of things I wanted to uh bring up. I did get a link from like Mr. Sung about the Department of Emergency Management, where you can get trained. So train community is a better prepared community. Learn how you and your family can help after an emergency or disaster by taking advantage of one or more of the following training opportunities. Uh the link, uh I wanna see if this is correct, is honaldudu dot gov forward slash D as in Delta, E as in Echo, M as in Mike, forward slash get dash trained, forward slash. Um they go, we can also put it on the newsletter too. Uh that's one, and I also also wanted to mention the Law Enforcement Explorer Program. This is a program I joined ten years ago, uh when I was a senior in high school. But they provide young adults, fourteen and twenty years of age, who may be interested in a career in law enforcement with a comprehensive program of training and mentorship. Program program advisors will work to develop explorers into better citizens. But basically, year, it's a year round enrollment, unlike um last time, I think they just gathered everyone for an October training, and then everyone that was there is an explorer. But I wanted to start early to let you guys know that it's a year round enrollment, you can join today. Meetings are held at the Keikula Makai Police Academy, nine three dash zero, nine three Waipahu Du Pot Deboe Street. I don't remember pronouncing that right. It's usually Saturdays though, from eight hundred to twelve hundred hours in the morning. Yeah, it's for um anyone eighteen to twenty. I think they have another um program called Explorers for um, what is it called? For eighteen or twenty, I think eighteen plus or twenty one plus. So I could even join that too if I wanted, so. Uh we can follow up with, I think, the same people. Um and of course, tomorrow is the Thursday, September eleventh um workshop, the Design Workshop with Heart. And then this Saturday is the We Are Kalih being to uh Begin Together event, this Saturday, September thirteenth, from ten A M to one P M. So it's gonna be after Mr. Kumalai's cleanup from eight to nine. And then Adult Middle School will be the We Are Kalih event from ten A M to one P M. I think that's everything, yeah. Okay, um we'll move on to the announcements, which is next meeting is Wednesday, October eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M at Kapalama Halli Room one five three. Broadcast meetings, Neighborhood Board meetings aired on Aledo Channel forty nine on the fourth, Saturday of the month at six P M. And the first and third Sunday of the month at nine A M. Are there any more announcements? Oh, um is it Mr. Ropati, oh, Mr. Leoa? You have your hand up?
I thank you, yes, uh I wanna thank um Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board, uh Mr. James Soon, uh Senator Donna Mercado Kim, uh State Representative Ikai Kahasi, and Councilman Mr. Delasatos, uh for joining us and representing our Kalih Valley. Uh neighborhood at our Arlethamal hundred fifty fifth uh hundred fifty anniversary, so I just wanna put that on the on the notes and. Uh thank these individuals for taking their time to come and be with us at our uh G fiftieth, thank you.
Thank you very much, and if there are um no more announcements of.
I have a question. Ladies, who are you?
Uh we're the U H Manoa Nursing Student, so we're doing service hours for our community. So that's there, so we're tasked to go into neighborhood meetings and just listening to and see what it's like.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
Was it fun?
Yes.
Do you guys hear the hearing?
And she doesn't communicate.
I couldn't hear anything, could you please repeat that? Excuse me.
Okay, Peter P, yeah.
Oh, so we're from U H Manoa Nursing Department and we're just um joining in like neighborhood meetings in our areas. And kinda just listening into um our the concerns of our neighborhoods and just seeing um what it's like, how the meeting runs.
Better when you be a better nurse.
Yeah.
Right on. Were you able to, um, if that was Ross?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and if there's, if that's all the announcements and no other questions, then this meeting is adjourned. Okay, come in. Thank you, everyone, here it is, um, G fifty three.